10:00 AM. Stonecrest City Hall, our first meeting actually ends in Stonecrest City Hall. This is very exciting. I love it. We've got to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Rock Turner.
Here.
Councilmember George Turner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jimmy Clinton.
Present.
Councilmember Diana Adama.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Cobb. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll go stand for the pledge, please. And then we can. By our very own.
Father, as the mayor was saying, this is a very special day. This is our first council meeting in our new home. And I was thinking about, what would be a wonderful script to have as a foundation? It came to me in Micah 6:8, which says, "What does the Lord require of us?" Each of us have a responsibility to the Spirit of the Lord. As council people, as mayor, what does he require of us? What does he want from us? As he said us in this new home. Well, the first thing he says that he wants is for us to do justly, which means to have integrity, to make sure that we're doing the right thing and always at the right time. The second is to have mercy, to care about people and do those things that's helpful to people. And thirdly, to humble ourselves, understand that we're servants here, to work for each other, to make lives better for everybody else. So we've had a wonderful opportunity to build this foundation on, this city hall that will stand for integrity, for justice, and for mercy. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that you've given us one more day to serve you and to serve the people that you so much love. We thank you, Lord, that we will come together synergistically, different ideas, different mindsets, different perceptions, but we'll come together to move forward, to make this a great city in your name. So, Father, we ask that you will bless this meeting, God, with your wisdom and your direction. Bless the people that are here. Bless our mayor and our council as we move forth to do great things for the King of God and for this city. We give you all the glory and the praise, Father, and we thank you for it. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
A pledge is to be like. From the United States of America and into the Republic of which you stand, my nation and my God, with liberty and justice for all.
Proceed. Madam Clerk, we'll go straight into the comments.
Mr. Mayor, I have ten, actually nine speakers.
All right.
Dela Loman Smith, Fay Cofield, and Julia Berry.
Good morning, council. I'm Dela Loman Smith. I am a resident of District Four. I have been an active member of the Governor's Commission, including serving as a member of the Economic Development Subcommittee. I currently serve as the Vice President of the Brownsville Elementary School PTA, and I'm also a past local government executive with about fifteen years of experience, and that in three different states, including currently serving as a Leadership and Strategic Planning Consultant to local governments throughout the Southeast. And as an active supporter and a passionate supporter of the city of Stonecrest, as an active member of this community, as well as a local government expert, I wanted to come to express my opposition to the proposed charter changes that are before you to vote on today. I did have the opportunity to not attend but to view the State of the City address that was delivered on Monday, as well as to participate in my councilman's town hall meeting that he graciously held this week, which I, to my knowledge, was the first and only opportunity for citizens to engage with our elected officials about these proposed changes. And some of the justifications that I've heard for this charter were that we, the city and the mayor specifically, is doing a great job and that that perhaps justifies the increased salary for the mayor. That was what I got from that State of the City address, that the mayor is working full-time but is only getting paid part-time, that we need a full-time mayor because we're a brand-new city and we're different from every other brand-new city that started in Metro Atlanta, and that because we've got sploshed revenue, that we need a COO to oversee specifically sploshed and other things. And I do not find, as a citizen nor as a local government expert, any of those reasons to be justification at all for the proposed changes. I believe that the doing a great job, obviously, the reward for that as elected officials is if citizens agree with you, we reelect you, not give you a raise. That is the reward for doing a great job as an elected official. With regard to working full-time and getting paid part-time, that brought to mind, having been a manager for many years, if an employee had come to me and said...
I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Precious.
Fay Cofield. Julia Berry. No, Ms. Cofield, please come so my records are straight.
Okay, I thought you called before you called me.
No, ma'am.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am going to agree with everything that the previous speaker has said, and I'm also going to take a step further. Stonecrest was in a lot better position than a lot of cities when it was taken over. We had, when you became mayor, we also had major banks, we had a major regional shopping center, we had the hospital that serves almost all of South E-Cab, and we had a lot of other things that were going on. What we did not have was places to go eat. So I propose to you, you have a visitor in your home, you don't want to bring them to the mall. Where do you go to eat? Where do you go to shop outside the mall? The job of the mayor is listed in the charter as the job of the mayor. It is not listed as full or part-time. But the most troubling part of this is that it appears you're taking the coward's way out. The law of Georgia allows, under home rule, for you to vote a raise for yourself. The only problem with that raise is it does not take effect until the next administration comes in. I find it very troubling that you are asking the citizens of Stonecrest, in addition to all of these fees that we now have to pay as franchise fees and this new fee that you're giving to the banks, which will also be put on most of the residents of Stonecrest. That's item number three. You're also asking us to increase the mayor's salary by 350%, which will make him the second-highest-paid mayor in the state of Georgia, only preceded by the mayor of Atlanta. I need to ask this question. Did anyone not read the job descriptions of your specific positions when you took the position? Because I have been a candidate, and I know that they give you a slip that says what the job is and what the salary is, and that's what you agreed to. You have not been in office a year. The only thing we've seen has been development talk about the mall. We haven't... I ask, you don't even have a development plan for the majority of the city, yet you want us to give the mayor a raise. It's unacceptable. Every country, I do human rights, every country I've seen that has had their government overthrown or removed has been because of the failure to meet the demands of people. That was true in Zimbabwe just a few days ago. They got tired of it. We're tired of it. It seems like we're going down the same road we went into Cab County, where we talk about lining the pockets of politicians. This is a job of service, of service to the people, of service to the community, and it needs to be in line with what the mayors of Dunwoody, Decatur, and everywhere else get. So I strongly suggest that you look at the $16,000 that the mayor of Dunwoody and other places are paying. And don't forget, the mayor of Decatur's only paid $9,600, and they're doing a lot of development there.
Good morning, ma'am and council.
Good morning.
My name is Julia Berry, and I live at 6728 Gina August Circle in the new city of Stonecrest. Thank you for offering your great service. I am a proud resident of Stonecrest. I'm very excited about the possibility of things to come. And I did vote for the city of Stonecrest, and I voted for the sploshes. The problem that I have now is, I guess because I was so excited to see some of and hear a lot of the things that's going on now. It's a lot of controversy right now. And I think that if we... It's not so much that you're being overpaid, I just think because I know that the salary's low. But I think that maybe now is not the time to focus on salary at this moment. I think that's probably a lot of the problem, people, until, you know, some other things are done. And I think, I don't think it's so much of opposition that it's too much, but I think a lot of it has to do with the timing. And I would ask that you will consider that, you know, maybe just putting on hold or voting no right now until a later date. Thank you. Please, sir.
This is Darrell Unray, Al Franklin, and Valerie Carter.
Good afternoon, councilman and mayor. I'm here as a, not as a citizen of Stonecrest, but at least I'm an expert witness for you. I was previously a mayor of a city, a small, very small city. It's a very taxing job as being the mayor. I know a lot of people come up here with a salary and take a couple of minutes off of work and come and make comments like people shouldn't get paid anything but return back to their work. And it's a hard job, and it takes a lot of time. I was reading a book called Good to Great. That's an excellent book for you to read about executive decisions that were made that took a company from good to great. There's good to follow behind other cities, and they're doing this and they're doing that, and they're on a different playing field than Stonecrest. The corporations bringing in millions of dollars, and we are not there yet. But the main thing is to take this city from good to great. You have to stick out the box, make it work wild, make this position what it's supposed to be. We need to be different, and I'm depending on you guys, and I'm right there in Lethony. So I'm depending on y'all to make some great decisions, to bring this area up. You have to step out the box. Good to great, not good and maybe great because we're just going to follow behind some other folks. It's time for us to lead, do something. I remember being there, trying to find, keeping my job going, because nobody hires a mayor in a corporation. It's too much political weight that comes with that, because anything could happen. They'll follow up with that corporation and put a stain on it. Also, just being, I did substitute teaching when I was the mayor, and I would have the city chief come to my school for me to sign payroll checks. That's how bad the city looked, that you have an executive officer running around trying to find employment. And you guys, you know, as owner-council, you appear late, you come in, may not show up at all because you don't have a job. The mayor's seat is never empty. It should never be empty. The mayor should be there all the time, and I think that should be to pass this on, this stress, and make the city go from good to great. Thank you, sir.
Hello, mayor and council. Al Franklin. I think I at least had the pleasure of getting to know most of you all in this short period of time. Some of you may know or may not know, I've been in Lethony as a city councilman, served as mayor pro temp over there as well, and presently chair our local downtown Development Authority. I am in support of the increase for several reasons. I give you this example. When I was on council, and I actually had to do an internship because I was working on my master's, and I was actually interning for free, and I had to take care of some city council business, and I wanted to leave the office. And my manager looked at me like, "Are you serious? Are you seriously going to leave this place to go take care of some council business?" And I'm thinking in my head, "I'm interning for free." But it didn't matter because I had obligations that I signed up for for my graduate program to serve for a certain amount of hours per week in order to have it. So that's the constant conflict that you will have whenever you take care of working the city council role. And I know that each of you all know that because you've had to make some bit of compromise in regards to something personal that you have to take care of. I do believe that, and I've seen it from my mayor over here in Lethony, how many times that, you know, the extensive hours that they put in. The mayor over there in Lethony, she's excellent at going after grants. Grants take a lot of time, even with a city administrator and a small administrative staff. So in regards to salary increase, I know that it's deserved. But, you know, and I understand other people's opinions as well, because, you know, there are other models that suggest different. However, you know, this is a very large city. It needs to have a full-time mayor. So I'm not here to give you a salary number on what it should be, et cetera. But I am telling you that the demands of this position is definitely, without a doubt, a full-time role. And when we, when I first got on council, one of the problems we had was that we were three years behind on our audits. We had a full, we had our, a part-time mayor trying to do full-time work. And that's what happens. You're going to end up seeing some cracks in a city this size whenever you have it as a part-time role. He may currently work a lot of part, full-time hours, but all of the position requires part-time, there will be cracks. So I suggest that you lay a foundation, not only, you know, just for the mayor now, but lay a foundation for yourself, because one day you may be in that seat. And you're going to have to make decisions, personal decisions, whether you're going to be in your business, or whether you're going to be in the mayor's seat, or whether you're going to be at the office, or whatever location that you're going to be. So take it from that perspective as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Valerie Carter. Susan Lee. Julius Lee.
I'm Valerie Carter, 6590, Cherokee Drive. I'm in District Five. And I'd just like to say thank you to the mayor and to the city council for everything that you've done for all of us here. I'm a very proud resident of District Five. My position on the charter is basically this. It's not that the city of Stonecrest isn't one of the most exciting places to be right now. It certainly isn't that the council has not worked very hard to get us to this point. I think the mayor's town hall presentation was a very smart and compelling presentation of everything that's been done to get us from point A to point B. And I certainly appreciate your hard work and effort. And I understand that being a part-time mayor, trying to get the city of Stonecrest on the mat, is a lot of work. But at this point in time, I just feel as though it's not an issue of whether you're worth it, it's an issue of timing. It's an issue of, I think the people of Stonecrest haven't yet seen enough of the kinds of things that they would like to see to feel as though the, some of the charter changes are justified at this point in time. And it's not that people don't recognize your work, Mr. Mayor. I thought you made a very, very compelling presentation at the town hall. I just think it's a little too soon, and I can't honestly say that I would vote for it myself at this point in time. And it has really nothing to do with what has or has not been done by you and the city council. It's just the timing. It is just a little too soon to move this far ahead with asking for money. There aren't enough people in the city of Stonecrest that even understand what has been done so far. That's why your presentation was so compelling and important. It's important to make sure that people understand what is going on, how we got from point A to point B, and you, in my opinion, have to get it out there a lot more so that you do get the support that you feel you need to become a full-time mayor. So I just want to thank everybody for everything that you've done, and it certainly is recognized. But I just feel as though, when I talk to the people that I live near, most of the people feel as though they don't really understand why this is happening at this point in time. Thank you.
Good morning, fellow Stonecrest residents and Amazonites. I am Susan Lee, a retired senior citizen. I had to write the fact that I'm a senior citizen because I really don't think of myself as a senior citizen at 68 years of age. I had to admit I'm a senior citizen because I can remember when I was in the work world, I would hear my customers tell me they're a senior citizen and on a fixed income. Well, that's me, a senior citizen on a fixed income. And I have no problem with Mayor Larry asking for a charter change and a salary of $85,000. Council members, I see no problem with you receiving salaries for equal work as well. I have attended most of the Stonecrest Alliance meetings, work session meetings, and city council meetings. Unlike some of the naysayers that are getting their information on Nextdoor from individuals writing this disclaimer, I haven't attended the meetings, but this is what I heard, and will post erroneous information like this to Gospel and give out misinformation. I like, no, I love the changes that are taking place in Stonecrest. New businesses, which means we are gaining a strong tax base. Round One, Atlanta Sports City, Emory Hospital, new hotels, and other things I can't think of now. I'm a senior citizen, and I'm allowed to memory lapse. What about the changes on Klondike Road and the Cinder Block Hotel? I, on my fixed income, want to tell all of you, our mayor rightly deserves an annual salary of $85,000. He is doing Rolls-Royce management and business on a UGEL salary. And those of you that oppose equal compensation for equal work, you need to take your hand, your head out of the sand and congratulate and reward our mayor for his worth as a man that is positively leading our city into the future for our children. We Stonecrest residents and naysayers, we get what we pay for. UGEL decisions or Rolls-Royce caliber of changes going on. Thank you.
Julius Lee and Lisa Wright.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Julius Lee. I'm a homeowner in District Five, a proud homeowner in District Five. And, Mr. Adama, you are my leader, and I really respect everything that you've done, and I really appreciate you, and I appreciate all the other council people in terms of what you're doing to support our good mayor. Okay? And when he made his presentation, I made a statement, "That's my favor," and I stand by that. I have been an appointee of two mayors, fortunately, in Detroit, Michigan, Coleman Young and Dennis Archer. I was an appointee for ten years, so I kind of know a little bit about what the mayor has to do, what the mayor goes through, and what the city council goes through. So I'm here to say to you, Mr. Mayor, I support you 1,000% in basically your proposal of changes in the city charter as well as for a raise. I know too, being a professional executive director of YMCA's for over 35 years, I know that salary is important. The people who we meet and shake arms with, you know, they look at you as not a $10,000 person, but as a $85,000. And my job, when I was working executive at the YMCA, I was making that kind of money and nowhere near what you're having, the responsibilities you have to do. So I can appreciate, you know, what you're having to do, and we need to, as a city and as a city council organization, support you. I believe that statement that you made, make this a world-class city. And it's just that simple. That's, I'm looking for that vision, just like you. And I appreciate your vision of looking at us as being a world-class city, because if we don't see ourselves that way, no one else will. And if we go on nickel and dime it, what message does that send out to all of the world-class people that we're looking to bring in? So again, I would want to say that I stand with you, Mr. Mayor. I stand with you, city council. I stand with my district chairman. She's a wonderful person, and I want to let people know that. And my wife, just before me, said it all. I don't need to say anymore because we're united in this effort, and I'm hoping that we're going to be united as a city to make us the number-one city in the world. Thank you so much.
Lisa Wright and J.W. Edie.
Good morning, mayor. Good morning, council people. I'm proud to be here, proud to be a resident of District Five, proud to be a business owner in District Five. I have been an active volunteer at every event I can. I have attended and have been well informed of what's going on. And my one concern about the charter amendments is this. I haven't seen any financial statements to know where we are financially to be able to justify as a CPA, as a business owner, as a person who manages money on behalf of others and who had active debt and leadership positions in nonprofits and for-profit organizations, I could not justify it. I know everyone works hard. I know everyone's worthy of their salary. But my issue is the changes have come so quickly that I'm not comfortable with that because I haven't seen where we are right now. I mean, I hope we can offer the mayor and the council people more money in the future, but all of these changes came just too quickly for me to be comfortable. And I applaud you for your effort. I applaud you for everything you've done for the city. I applaud you for your vision, mayor. I applaud everyone for what they've put into it. But I think we need to slow down and get a good foundation. Even when he prayed today, he said, "Integrity, justice, and mercy." We need to have some integrity about the situation and not make these quick changes. I don't want anyone not to, a workman's worth if it was higher. That's what the word says, and that's what I stand on. But at the same time, we have to know where we are to know that that's justified. So I applaud you for everything you've done. I'm not just concerned with just the salary, I'm concerned with the other amendments. I just think we voted on a charter, let's make it work, let's put some more time, and let's show some proof, and let's show where we are as a city financially so we can see, can we do this in a good way? So once again, I thank you for everything we've done. I look forward to working with you in the future on other events, and I applaud all of you for what we've done. And I think we have a good foundation, but we need to just get it a little firmer before we make some major changes. So thank you for everything you've done, and thank you for the time.
Good morning, everybody. My name is J.W. Edie. I moved down here ten years ago into the Bronx of Stonecrest, and that was my, that is my retirement home. We were going great at that time, and the market fell. Then everything went down. And then a year, less than a year ago, we were blessed with the city. And we've been working on this, and I've seen, I've been to every meeting that they've had here, so I think I'm well-versed on what's happening. We want a first-class city, world-first-class city. We will not get it with a part-time mayor. Any, any organization may start out slowly, but we, we're moving greatly, we're moving ahead. And there is no reason why we should have a part-time mayor. We should have a full-time mayor so he can do a full-time job, and he's done these things already at a $20,000 salary. This is ridiculous. I retired from Prudential Insurance, and I was making well over that in part-time as a salesperson. See, he's, he's doing the job of a full-time $20,000 at my retirement, at right now. I would not take a job for $20,000, putting full-time in, which is ridiculous. And we're asking him to become a full, we're asking for a full city with all the amenities that we would want at a full, at a part-time salary, impossible. So I support you 100% that you should get, because the original charter was $75,000. So what now you're saying, "No, you shouldn't have, it is too quick." What is too quick? You need to work hard and get this, this off the ground. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Ian Sopovich.
Thank you. Thank you, citizens, for all your comments. And we're going to move to the approval of the Minnesota regular city council meeting of November 20th, 2017. Council, I'll give you an opportunity to peruse that, see if we have any changes or additions. Council, I'll give you an opportunity to peruse that, see if we have any changes or additions. All right, seeing any or none?
Mr. Mayor, I'm having trouble pulling mine up. I'm having trouble pulling mine up, but I do recall two errors that need to be corrected. One, for the deferral, you have two thousand and eighteen, it should be two thousand and seventeen. And regularly, you misspelled words, that's all right.
George.
No, it wasn't mine. I'm looking for it here. Just the name of the attorney. First name?
Destiny.
Council, are you, oh, I thought you were still living.
Oh, no, no, I dropped it, just those two.
Oh, good deal, all right, you have it, now, clerk. All right, then, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November twentieth, twenty seventeen meeting with the corrections as stated by Councilman Turner. Twenty eighteen should be changed to twenty seventeen on the deferral and to correct the spelling of attorney, um, Destiny. Correct the spelling of her name.
Second motion.
All right, properly moved and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Ah, the approval of the minutes, November twentieth, two thousand seventeen passes. Adoption of the city council agenda. Couple of things, council, that I am going to, to do here. We have been in good deliberation, and when I say we have been good, in good deliberation, that means council, citizens, public meetings, and the like. So the best course of action that we think that should collectively happen in this arena for what, for where we're going, is to give this, just a little bit more time. And what I mean by that is, someone mentioned about pace. There's only so much more time we can give this because the general assembly is upon us. And ladies and gentlemen, make no mistake about it, we can either decide what we're going to do with each other, or they will decide for us. And that is coming this session. Let me give you a very specific example of that situation. Had we not intervened even before we were elected earlier this year, there would have been some things posed upon us that we would have no control of whatsoever. Those bills are still out there, so we still have to do something about that. I can appreciate the comments with regards to the pace that we're going at, but sometimes, ladies and gentlemen, we don't set, we don't set the pace for a race. The race starts, and then we have to start. I can also appreciate the level of, which I really appreciate, the level of intelligence and experience that we have in this room, as you have sitting up here also. So what I am proposing is that we, I'll take a motion to move this item to our January meeting. What that will do is give our council folks additional time to talk to their constituents. And I'll tell you something, it's probably in rare form too, that you don't realize. Everybody is my constituent, so I hear from everyone. And I've had a barrage of communication in a positive way to be able to move forward. However, I want the citizens and the council themselves to feel comfortable with where we're going, and if we need to make some particular adjustments, or if we need to make sure that we're close to being on the same page, I'm okay with that, matter of fact, I prefer that. But understand something, ladies and gentlemen, this is why you have six people sitting up here. You're not going to have one hundred percent agreement on one hundred percent of everything. You have to go with what the majority is and what's best that we can do for your citizens and, and, and your council folks and mayor so that we can move forward. So with that, I'll take a motion to, I'll move this item to our January meeting.
Mr. Mayor, which item are you referring to?
I'm sorry, number two, the resolution by the city of Stonecrest authorizing the submission of charter amendments.
If you ever make, can you be specific whether you want it at the second or the sixteenth meeting? Both of them will be on Tuesday because of the holidays. Second would be because the first is New Year's, and the sixteenth is because of my things on the fifty.
Mr. Mayor and Ms. Clerk, can we make the motion to just simply move it to a later date in December, in January? Or do we have to be specific?
Well, if you're, if, you can always move it again if you want to have a specific date, or you can leave it open and then add it back to the agenda when you wish to do so. So my opinion would be you can do either one. One thing about setting a date is that that gives you a deadline to work toward.
Okay, since the, I'm sorry, council.
Can they just table it to a future agenda?
Well, the only reason, one of the reasons why I asked that question was I want to make sure that this does come back up before this legislative section is over. So we want to do it in a timely, enough fashion so that it can address the issue now. We've stated this over and over again, and, you know, and, and again, just for the sake of the audience and the notice for my fellow council members, is that we have to address this issue one way or the other. Either we can do nothing and just allow the HB six hundred to be reviewed by state legislators and call it a day, or we have to agree to do something, I mean, whatever it is. And so at this point in time, you know, I would like to make that motion that we do move this agenda item to a later date in January specifically. I don't know if we have to include in the motion a particular date, but I would like to say in January.
Well, if I could just make one comment, is that you are going to be faced with a short session because it is an election year, two thousand and eighteen. So I, you know, if you're going to vote on anything, I would at least make sure that you do it in January.
So the sixteenth is your second meeting, if you want to.
Okay, so.
Well, the date of the session starts on January eighth, if I recall correctly.
So you have the second and the sixteenth, the meeting dates, if you want to come on those days. If they just want a special party.
All right, so, so my, my motion then would be amended to say the sixteenth of January specifically.
So I, so once the session starts, you can publish for the session, but once the session starts, then there's going to have to be a publication which will then push the date further down in time in which it can be introduced at the general assembly. I'm just bringing that to your attention. Basically, because whether it's general legislation or local legislation, there has to be an introduction of that into the newspaper before there's anything that's going to be done on it. So the sixteenth would be, to me, in my opinion, the latest that you can deal with.
So, Ben? The motion is on the floor.
I second the motion. With the comment. What you have published on the website is an old proposed charter change. We need to update, and I think that may have confused some people. So I think it's necessary that we get out the latest proposed charter change because the one that's there has, I don't know how many items, but it's over twelve, and we were down to, I believe, five or six, so we need to update that.
Okay, I agree. All right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor moving this item to the January sixteenth meeting of two thousand and eighteen? All opposed? So moved. Also, we're going to add a item under new business, and this is the Carruthers and Mitchells' opportunity to engage the opinion of the mayor pro tempum charter. That'll be on a new business. All right, I will take a motion to adopt the city council meeting agenda for today.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the city council agenda with your addition of mayor pro tempum term.
Second.
So moved and properly second. Any further discussion? For the actual, for new business and the old business.
That's the end of removing the old one and adding.
All right.
Remove it and add.
To and add number five.
Okay, so I make a motion to remove the resolution by the city of Stonecrest authorizing the submission of charter amendments to the decaf local delegation and to add the length of the term of the mayor pro tempum under new business.
Give the date that we move the.
To January sixteenth.
All right. All right.
Second, that motion.
All right, properly moved and second. All in favor of adoption of the city council agenda? All opposed? All right, agenda passes. On old business, ordinance adopting Article seven, excise tax on rental rental motor vehicles.
Mayor and council, this is the second read of this ordinance. First read hadn't taken place in the last regular meeting related to the levy of a three percent tax on the rental of automobiles within the city of Stonecrest. This is a tax that, it's not an increase in a tax, it's just being able to levy it so the county can levy it now that it's in this signature that's there. Today is December fourth, and so we have to also determine what the effective date of this ordinance is going to be. Add a, add a, I guess, an abundance of caution, I would suggest it be effective January one so we don't retroactive back to December one of this year.
So make a second again, I'm listening.
Make it effective January one, two thousand and eighteen. And then the first report would be due February twentieth, twenty eighteen. Those are blanks that are currently in the ordinance.
Mr. City Attorney, would this be classified as your second read?
This is the second read, and it's ready for, it's ready for the council to vote on it if it wishes to do so.
All right, anything further, sir?
No, sir.
Then, council, I'll take a motion for the ordinance adopting Article seven.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance of the city of Stonecrest, Georgia, adopting Article seven, excise tax on rental motor vehicles on chapter twenty-four taxation of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Stonecrest, Georgia.
I second it.
So moved and properly second. Any further discussion?
One quick question.
Sir.
I know we have one rental operation in the city of Stonecrest. What about the rental truck operation that applies to them as well?
You know, I don't believe it does. Talks, it, that's a good question, though, but I believe it relates just to the rental of automobiles. Before I stick my foot in my mouth. Rental motor vehicles, I mean, would include, right?
It's not.
It would. As long as it's less than thirty days. Also, car dealers also rent cars. So I mean, there's, you know, there's opportunities out there for code enforcement to determine whether or not you put all the taxes.
And council, council, I know we discussed this the other day, and I think, you know, I was talking to Mr. Joyner, I think that there's a provision in there that speaks specifically to passenger vehicles ten and under. So we need to kind of flesh out exactly what the details of the division are. And we'll get that clarified, sort of.
Yeah, that's all, passenger vehicle ten and under.
All right, there's a motion, this on the floor, and have we continued our.
Second.
All right, good deal. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? All right, ordinance passes. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I will go to. Move the new business, number three?
Yes, sir. All right, what, what you have is, is a first read of an ordinance adopting Article four, depository financial institutions business license tax. This is the first read, the second read will be in your second meeting. This is something that needs to be adopted and levied by year end. The financial institutions tax relates to banks and savings and loans associations. To the extent that there is a branch within the city of Stonecrest, then the Department of Revenue will go through an allocation of however they formulated to determine how much financial institution taxes pay. The financial institution pays a tax of point two five, one percent on all of its income, interest income and the like, less its interest expense. And then that's multiplied times point two five of one percent. And then based upon the, the activity of, of that bank within the state of Georgia, it includes a portion by the Department of Revenue through various cities. Notwithstanding that, this ordinance also provides for a minimum tax, which is the maximum minimum tax of any financial institution doing business in the city of one thousand dollars. So if your share of the tax comes out less than one thousand dollars, then you will be allocated that, that one thousand dollars. It will be based upon the income of two thousand and seventeen for the calendar year. So we need to be in a position in which we, this is the first read, but we need to be in a position where we pass this ordinance.
All right, first read, so it passes. Number four?
Can I ask one?
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir.
One question, City Attorney. Does this include credit unions also?
It does not. Credit unions have a special, they pay no income tax, they work out. It's always been one of those, those issues that the other financial institutions have as the credit unions, as you know, have expanded beyond what is a normal aspect of what they were as service members with respect to where they worked. Now they're geographically all over the place.
Good morning, Mayor. This is the first read of the Georgia Power Electrical Franchise. As we discussed at the work session on Wednesday, there's one other electrical franchise in the city of Stonecrest, and it's for a snack and shovels. And to my knowledge, they've paid their, they're paying their franchise checks monthly. But there are also customers with electrical service to Georgia Power, so this franchise agreement will cover them. This will be a thirty-five-year franchise agreement. This will be a 35-year franchise agreement. And just to reiterate, when you would get the payments and how much you would get on or before the first day of March in each year following your adoption of this franchise, you would get, for the first year, but in 2018, you would get 4% of the gross sales of electric energy to customers served under residential and commercial rate schedules for this entire calendar year. So from January to December of 2017, you would get paid on or before March 2018. But for industrial rate schedules, just because of the time that you're passing this franchise ordinance, you wouldn't get anything from this year because you would only get the next month, the month after you pass it, is when you would start getting the money from it. And since this is the end of the year, then you wouldn't get anything from 2017. So there are, there's nothing really remarkable or really different about this franchise agreement from the Snack and Show's agreement.
Mr. City Attorney, how does, how does that differ from what you and I have been working on with, and Mr. Joyner, with Georgia Power?
Yes, sir, this is the Georgia Power franchise agreement, so once this is signed and once this is ratified by the council, the next step is for them to go ahead and issue and execute it on their end. The challenge that we've been having right now, again, we've had a couple of meetings with Georgia Power officials, is there is just an elongated process, the process, they had to go through verification of all the addresses, and while a lot of the legwork was done previously by Mr. Joyner, you know, over the course of the last year, it still takes some time to go back through and physically have to go back through and verify all their addresses. They've gone through that step of the process, and they had to do a 30-day trial run of the, all the accounts. They've completed that part of the process, and I think that was shared with us at our last meeting with the Georgia Power official. We're just trying right now, so the next two steps are find out exactly what that trial one, what that trial run yielded, and then from there, they'll be looking at, they have a policy in place where they will, this initial year for startup cities, they will lend up to 25% of the anticipated annual revenues. So we're waiting right now to find out what that actual estimated annual revenue is, and then to solidify and secure a check prior to the end of the year. So this is a step that's necessary for us to be able to collect funds from Georgia Power in the same manner that we collected funds from Snack and Show's.
Continue on the mission that you and I.
Yes, sir. You know, this is one of the big ones, we're still, it's lingering out there. We just recently went through the Comcast process, we've gotten through all that, all the council approved that franchise agreement, so now we're on the backside of that one as well, pushing them for the, for the actual receipt of check.
So to update council and city council members, I've engaged, excuse me, I've engaged with the senior VP and president of Georgia Power to make sure that we will get this done as expediently as possible. As, as City Manager has mentioned, it is a very long process, and we started this process more than a year ago, even before we were, right when we were incorporated as a, as a city, so, but, you know, well worth the effort. So that's, that's where we are. We expect to, we expect to get a check or some semblance of a check this year. I use the term "this year." So we, we have their attention at the office of the president's level.
Yeah, I got a question. What are we expecting for this year?
How much money?
Yes. And what did you mean when you said that we're not going to get anything for 2017? Maybe I didn't hear you right?
Okay.
But can you please clarify?
So for, the check will be made to the city at some point on or before March of 2018, and for residential and commercial rate schedules, you will get 4% of the gross sales to Stonecrest customers between January 2017 and December 2017. So for the previous calendar year. But for industrial rate schedules, it's not the, you will only, from the adoption date of this ordinance, it takes effect the next month, the first day of the next month, and it goes through December 31st of that calendar year. So since we're adopting it in December of 2017, then the first day of the next, the next month would be January 1st, so it would, that date will fall after December 31st. So for industrial rate schedules only, you wouldn't get anything for 2017, just because of the time that, the time that we passed it, just because it's in December. If it was last month, then you would get Decembers, December 1st to December 31st, 2017, you would get that industrial rate.
Okay, so, Mr. City Manager, so what did we budget, or did we budget any of those franchise fees in the proposed 2018 budget? Since we don't have actuals right now, I'm still trying to get my arms around, you know, where are we now, and where do we plan to be in 2018, and if we're not going to get anything, was anything budgeted?
So for 2017, what we anticipated in revenues from Georgia Power, ballpark about 1.2 million is what we anticipate the check being for the year. So that would be the check that, as Ms. Washington mentioned, would be due to the city by, prior to March of 2018, that would be for 2017. We had, per their policy, they will, they will cut us a check for up to 25%. So the anticipated, or the estimated revenue amount for this year was $300,000. And that's what's shown in our 2017 budget, based on, again, the work that had gone in, the fact that we started the process so much earlier. So the hope was that they would, and this is what they've done in other jurisdictions, they'll, they've gone as far as going up to 25% of their anticipated revenues. So we're hopeful that those anticipated revenues would total about 1.2 million, 25% of that would give us the, about $300,000. So for next year's budget, you know, we'll have a far better number once we actually go through this, once they finalize this exercise and provide us with the actual numbers, but for right now, and again, we're gauging that based off the Carl Vincent studies, some other similar sized jurisdictions, and what we're seeing from, doing a comparison of what we're receiving from Snack and Show's as well.
Okay, so then these projections, are they pretty much aligned with the Carl Vincent Institute study? Or are we all for under, or just pretty much where we need to be?
We're slightly off, actually, we're not slightly off, we're, Carl Vincent had a total number for franchise fees of about 3.8. I'm anticipating for next year that number being closer to about 2.6, I believe, for next year. It's just not tracking nearly as high.
Thank you.
I am on Georgia Power. As a customer, what will I see on my bill as a result of this?
Well, Mr. Joyner, at the last meeting, he actually told me something that I didn't know about Georgia Power collecting franchise fees. They had been collecting these already in the city limits for their customers, even though it was unincorporated. So it should, it should not be different, because they've already been collecting it. Is that an understatement?
Slight, slight, this is a slight increase.
Slight increase.
0.5%.
0.5% of their bill.
Of what, what is, currently, you mean, collecting?
So how much, I can, we can find out?
I'm just saying that, so that I will see something.
Yes.
Although it's very small according to what you're saying.
Right.
Okay, just needed to hear.
Yep, they, they currently collect 2.1%.
2.1%. So it's currently 2.1, it'd go up to 2.6.
Gotcha. So, yeah, just one other thing, and I know it's just a matter of wordsmithing, and it says, "And the ordinance granting franchise fees to Georgia Power by the City of Stonecrest", is that the way it should read?
You mean the agenda item?
Yes.
No, the, this is an ordinance to adopt an electrical franchise for Georgia Power. So the, so the agenda should read, "An ordinance to adopt the electrical franchise for Georgia Power," not, that they're not being granted franchise fees. The city is being granted franchise fees.
I, I know, just the way it was reading, it was coming out, concerning me.
Right.
Okay.
Should we, do we need to amend the agenda item to reflect what the, do we need to do that, even though it's the first read?
Well, the purpose, as I, as I read, is the ordinance is granting franchise, you are granting a franchise to Georgia Power. You're getting a feedback of that.
We're not granting them a franchise fee?
No. Well, I, I don't know, I was just looking at the.
Oh, no, the actual agenda itself says we might see that.
Yeah, I think, the line item says one thing, and the ordinance says something different. I think, yeah, I think that's where we just.
I was, I was.
Just so everybody be on the same page.
The gospel, whatever this agenda item memo is, that I'm holding upside down.
Right. So, so just, to really, I guess, to get back on board, as Councilor Turner was saying, and to offer some, to, I guess, gather some clarification in regards to what will and what would not be different on your Georgia Power bill after the franchise fees are granted. Basically what, and correct me, Mr. Joyner, want to join you at the microphone, that would be great, but correct me if I'm wrong in that the franchise fee, franchise fee will be 4%, is that correct?
Yes.
Georgia Power then decides whether or not they would pass on some of that, or all of that, or none of that to their customers, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what you guys are saying, that currently Georgia Power is collecting 2.5% or 2.1% at this current time, and that would increase 5.5%, which, that portion, oh, I'm sorry, George, go ahead.
Yeah, so Georgia Power currently collects 2.1% from their, from customers in unincorporated areas.
Which included Stonecrest.
Which includes the unincorporated Lathonia where Stonecrest is currently located. Soon as we incorporate, as soon as we pass the franchise fee ordinance for Georgia Power, they, they will increase that amount for the city to collect the franchise fee to 2.6%.
2.6%. And the difference will be passed on probably to the customers or definitely to the customers?
That 2.6% is what the customers are charged. So if you're unincorporated, you're charged 2.1%. When you become part of a city, then the franchise fee increases to 2.6%. So that's what is being passed on to the customer. We still collect 4% from Georgia Power.
Correct. So, okay, so I, I mean, because, what I'm trying to make certain is that the citizens in attendance, when the message is spread, that it's spread correctly so that we know that we're all on the same page. So basically what I'm hearing is a 0.5% increase that would probably be passed through to the citizens, that will be reflected in their.
On their, on their Georgia Power.
Georgia Power bill.
Correct. That was what was different with Snack and Show's. Snack and Show's did not collect any franchise fees in the unincorporated areas. So when they became incorporated in Stonecrest, they passed on the entire 4% onto their customers. So that, that is the difference between Georgia Power and Snack and Show's.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
I've got a question. You said that Mr. Joyner informed you that Georgia Power had already been collecting franchise fees, and I thought that we were told way back when that Georgia Power could not collect franchise fees, or utilities could not collect franchise fees, that the county was not collecting franchise fees, so the advantage to being a city hood was that we could then collect franchise fees. But what you're saying now is that, and actually, they have already been collecting franchise fees, and they've been remitting that to the county.
Well, the county can only collect, can only have cable franchise, so the county can't have any electrical or gas franchises. So that that's the only thing that the county will be collecting from any type of utility company in this incorporated area. I don't, I was just informed that Georgia Power had been collecting them, but I don't know what they had been doing with that, and I wasn't aware that they had been collecting.
I can tell you what they'd done with it.
They didn't, they weren't sending it to the county.
Yeah, goes to the Public Service Commission. So what ends up happening is that the council will make sure, a reasonable assumption that, that it would not go to the county, it'll probably go somewhere in the air, but specifically, it's going, it's been going to the Public Service Commission. And with that, so that we have some clarity with regards to the citizens and what Councilwoman Odoma asked. So the 1.2 million dollars that we estimate that will come along, of course, in 2018, they give a 20% margin on that with regards to an advance. That's the $300,000 that I'm trying to squeeze out of them as we sit for that, you know, particular advance. So it's not that we're not receiving any money for 2017. The city manager and I can only budget with regards to the estimate that they give us for the year with that multiplier. That's how we come up with that number. So to specifically answer that question, so that everyone knows, that's the number that we're looking at for Georgia Power for 2017, and then the full number for 2018.
No, I, I agree with what Ms. Cobble, her question, you clarified, it's gone to the PSC. So really, all they're doing is bumping it by 0.5%. So they've obviously been passing on to the customers whatever the fee that's been being paid to the PSC.
Exactly.
Which would be contrary, which would not, because you have the EMCs, which are not regulated, I don't believe by the PSC.
Well, while we're on power companies, but this is one of the things that we talked about for the future, and I mentioned this to Attorney Washington before, as I wanted to make a mental note of this for everyone. So if you all, as councilors and citizens, would allow me to rub the crystal ball just for a second, there will be one day, Stonecrest Power, there will be one day, Stonecrest EMC. We will deliver our own power, we will deliver our own franchise for some opportunities for ourselves. That could happen this year, that could happen next year, but we will be a deliverer of goods and services in that arena. That, that will make us millions of dollars for our territory. And this is why we're negotiating part of that upfront in this agreement, so that we'll know if we move toward that for the future, there won't be any hiccup in our, in our contract. Thank you.
Any more questions?
All righty. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
The item that's been added to the agenda relates to the work session that was, I guess, a week or two weeks ago, last Wednesday, when the issue came up concerning the term of mayor pro temp and the situation where the election took place after January 1st by virtue of the fact that the elections were delayed from doing that. I had indicated that we would have a conflict in making any opinion, since we had provided Ms. Odoma, at least with a resolution or a copy of a resolution. Did you ever find it, by the way?
Never found it, but I have the verbal.
But you will.
I have the verbal.
Well, you also have written it, too.
Yeah, what I did find, if you just want to know, is a copy of what was signed on May 8th, or whatever date it was, when I was elected.
The minutes?
Um.
Whatever.
Madam Clerk had the minutes.
Okay.
Yes, we have the minutes, we have documentation.
Yeah, there's documentation.
Yes.
There, so, so the issue came, the issue came up and was raised as to whether or not you need to stand again this January, or are you good for two years through, through May of 2018, 2019? And so since there's something to the effect that we had compined that it was going to be two years, I have, in effect, recused ourselves from making any opinion with respect to this matter. So I have talked with the firm, Carruthers and Mitchell, both Richard Carruthers and Thomas Mitchell, I've known for a long time, they're fine lawyers, they're fine city lawyers. They're on the north side of Atlanta, and Richard was at one time the county attorney of Portant County, and they represent a number of cities. Originally, I asked Richard if he would do it, he said he didn't have the time, he's dealing with the Voting Rights Act case, but Thomas indicated he could. So if council wishes to proceed with this, that would be my recommendation to engage. I had forwarded to all of you a copy of the engagement letter, and also a copy of the email that I had sent to them, in which I explained to the email that I had sent to them, in which I explained to them the situation, um, gave, sent a copy of the charter and indicated what the issue was. Other than that, I've had no other conversations, uh, with Mr. Mitchell. So this is, it's whatever the pleasure of council wishes to do, but that's my recommendation as to who, why we would, uh, that's who I would recommend that we engage.
Well, I make a motion that we retain the Mitchell Law Firm to answer the legal question regarding the two-year term for the mayor pro temp, also that he provide his opinion only in writing, not verbal or oral, and that he provide a detailed analysis as to how he arrived at his legal opinion.
Probably move, is there a second?
I guess we can have discussion after. All right, so go ahead in a second.
All right, probably move in a second. Discussion.
So, uh, you, you said if, if you felt that we need to proceed on this, is that...
Well, there's, there's, I mean, if, if the opinion came back that it's two years, it's two years. If the opinion comes back and said, no, uh, it should have only been for the short period since there was another election, it should stand again, then she would need to stand again.
All right, so what I'm asking, I guess, to get to the point is, uh, what, the, the opinion that we are seeking is whether this should be two years to run from May to May? Is that what you're saying, or is, or are we seeking an opinion on whether her term could, should continue for an additional two years so that it can align with what the charter intended? Because I don't think the charter intended for us to run mayor pro temp from May to May, that makes no sense to me.
Well, um, what, what the charter says is that once elected, it's for, for a term of two years. Um, if you read the entire charter and the entire provision of it, it contemplates, um, the fact that the mayor pro temp would take place after each municipal election. What was unique here is that, uh, the municipal election, uh, that took place here, uh, was really only seven months away from the next municipal election. So the, uh, the understanding that she had and, uh, from what we made, what we said to her is that it's a two-year term. So if it's not, so really, you're saying, does she go from May to May? Or does she stand again in July, then this January, then if elected again, she goes from January for two years to the next January after the next election? So instead of it going, instead of her, being her term running from May to May, it would run, would run from May until, uh, the January before the next 2019 election, which would be 2020.
I understand what you're saying, so to give you a, I guess, a better analogy of what I'm, what I'm trying to get to, is when we were, the three of us elected, um, well, six of us, actually, but three of us had to rerun, as you know, in, um, no, for this past November. When we were elected, we didn't run four years out of that election date to four years in the future. I mean, you know, even though the term is four years, but because of the way the, uh, the election was stag, stagnated, staggered, we had to run again in a short period of time, four months, prepare again and, and get ready for opponents in a short period of time, just to make certain that things make sense. So I don't know, I, I think whatever opinion that we're seeking, the opinion should go to what makes sense, and the intent of the charter, I don't think it was the intent of the charter for us to have four consecutive terms to start in March of 2017 and go four years out, I mean, that just, that just doesn't make sense, it's not even a real, real election year. And then to say in 2017, in 2019, in the middle of 2019, we, we, then we got a mayor pro temp again, I don't think that makes sense as well. So I think hopefully what we're seeking at the end of the day is, A, whether or not that, um, the mayor pro temp's, um, term should exceed this short period for an additional two years to realign itself with what the charter, I believe, intended, or for some weird reason that we should have a two-year, May to May mayor pro temp. I don't think nobody up here would agree with that, I don't think that was the intent. So, I mean, is that the reason why we're looking for this, uh, outside of opinion?
Let's, I don't disagree with what you're saying. Um, I don't, uh, as far as what, uh, Ms. O'Dama thought, what she pled to believe, I don't disagree with that because I, I, clearly my file shows that, and that's why I've recused myself.
Okay.
Um, so getting back to the point would be, um, the question is, would she need to stand for reelection at the first meeting in January, which would be January 2nd, and if reelected, the mayor pro temp, then she would go for the next two years, which would then follow the same, same logic that you, you indicated with respect to those of you who just ran for reelection again, because now you're good for four years. Um, and so, you know, the dilemma is, uh, is somewhat as a result of what your city attorney's done. I accept responsibility.
I understand. So, and to even a greater degree, you know, you know, for this, uh, additional counsel, legal counsel that we're seeking, that comes with an additional expense as well.
That's right.
And so, you know, these, these are the type of issues that I think we should probably be able to resolve in house, hopefully, but evidently, I understand your position that you have to at this point in time recuse yourself because you're part of this equation. So, um, but, you know, I guess with that said, I, I'll just leave it at that, and, you know, that's my opinion on it, um, you know, I just really would like to see this happen in a different way, I just think the fact, the, the fight that matters is that it just, you know, no disrespect to the, the mayor pro temp or to the mayor, uh, I just feel that this, there should be a realignment, it just really makes sense, I don't, you know, a realignment in one way or the other. Either realign and say that, okay, the intent was that you serve, or the mayor pro temp will serve X number of years, but even with that intent, you would have to, you would have to sup, you know, suppose that that person was going to get reelected, because what happened if that person didn't get reelected in November in the case, that could have happened, you know, so then automatically what, it would have been, what would have happened then. So, you know, I think we just should make sure that we make sense so that whatever we apply, apply forever is something that we want.
Yeah, and I agree, it's perfectly logical, and frankly, you know, I don't, uh, uh, cities shouldn't, shouldn't have to pay for this. My intention that it won't, um, because this is something as a result of confusion created by my office, and I need to clarify where it could be, because Mr. Mitchell won't know that, but I'll tell the council.
And if I can, if I can just add to what Councilman Clayton just mentioned, I appreciate what he said, however, what does make good sense is that the charter is quite clear that the mayor pro temp's term is two years. Um, and I think what needs to also be mentioned is that we sought a legal opinion, so I want to thank you for being the big person and saying, hey, you know, I think I may have erred on this, but we sought the legal opinion in advance about the term of the pro temp, and as you have eloquently said on multiple occasions, the term, um, the legal opinion that was provided to me was two years, which made sense based on the charter. And so I appreciate the independent counsel coming in, um, it provides due process and it provides for constitutional rights to be explored. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney.
Over you.
Oh. Sort of sound like, we sort of sound like Rob here. I wasn't looking at Jasper.
Do we have an agreement that all parties concerned will be bound by the opinion coming out of this matter, or might we wind up going through this again?
Well, I think that would be, you know, I think Ms. O'Dama would have to agree to that.
Okay. And, uh, when it comes to the interpretation of the charter, since we've thrown out our opinions on it, it clearly states that the term is two years, but it also clearly states that the term of each one of us is four years, but still we will held accountable to, uh, running on some short terms in order to, uh, calibrate the charter, so to speak. So that is clear as well.
Yeah, and this was, if I can add, Councilman Turner, we actually had these conversations when I was elected pro temp, so this is an old conversation that we're bringing up again, uh, we knew that, and that is why I sought a legal opinion from a well-qualified, um, municipal attorney. And so we're going back now, and I agree with my colleagues here, it's an added expense, but, you know, it's the only way to resolve the problem is to get an independent counsel.
I've got a couple of things. If we're going to the charter, charter also says after the election, um, that you would be selecting a mayor pro temp, is, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Also, I've heard a couple of things that I'm not clear on, so I want to get some clarity on it. One is that there is supposed to be an notice or a resolution with regards to that.
There was one prepared, but I don't think it was ever, it would have been signed by, um, the mayor and clerk, and, and the clerk has indicated she has no copy of it, doesn't recollect it ever signed.
And in the same year? So I haven't seen it or signed it.
So the, so what you have is the minutes, and what you have is an acknowledgement, the city attorney, that that document was prepared by the office, which said it was for two years.
Okay.
So, you know, I was, I, uh, I'm sorry for the confusion that's taken place. Uh, I anticipate that, uh, we both can anticipate whatever the opinion is, the council and Ms. O'Dama will abide by that.
No worries. Last thing, is I've, I've heard this a couple of, a couple of times also, um, what was given by word, I've got 70 words up here about what was given by words in the past that's not standing today. So it needs to be in writing, uh, it needs to be signed, it needs to be clear. The, the piece with that is that with regards to our charter, what threw off the entire charter piece is that when we didn't get approved in 2016, uh, the year before, we got approved the, uh, the next year, it still kept the same provisions in the charter, even with regards to running for office. So having said that, uh, council has to decide if they want to do a couple, a couple of things here. One is that, uh, by, by the other part of the charter that says, after each election, you will select your mayor pro temp. That election has occurred, you, you all are sworn in in January, by which you will select a mayor pro temp at that time, or to go on for this opinion that we just talked about, that we're talking about in this session right now, um, since there is a motion on the floor.
Also, you know, I just hate to belabor the point, but I will, don't have a problem. So, you know, we're talking about additional costs, we have no clue how much that cost's going to be, but I'm certain it's going to be more than a couple of thousand dollars. So we got citizens in the uproar already about the mayor's salary and this, that, and the other. I think this is one of the things that we should be able to resolve among council, this should be a, a super vote, I wish it could be, but I don't think, again, I will say this again, I'm waiting to hear anybody say something different, I don't think that there's anybody up here believe that the intent of the charter or the intent of this council is to have a imposition, to run from the middle of a term to the middle of another term, I don't think nobody wants that. At some, at some point in time, that has to be, as Councilman Turner put it, calibrated, so that we can have everything back on schedule. This is not any ill intent, ill, um, amount attempts being made, we just got to correct an issue that as you, as you said, you contributed to. So, uh, it doesn't matter, you know, what was the, how it happened, now it has to be corrected, I don't think we want to continue with a mayor pro temp that goes from the 17th of a year to this, uh, for two years to 17th of another year. The other thing is, and that's all the more reason why we have to look at our charter, we, there are some things, uh, as a matter of fact, um, Councilwoman O'Dama brought this up in, in like our second meeting, and, um, that we should relook at the charter, and we're here today, you know, trying to relook at the charter, and we're not, we're not really getting through this process, and we need to really address the charter more carefully so we can, uh, work on these type of issues. Maybe that pro temp, because we all get to, you know, get our opportunity to be mayor pro temp at some point in time if we want that, um, maybe we should even look at reducing the term from two years to one year, or something like that, where in that case, this wouldn't have made as much of a difference, you know, but, uh, when you talk about two years down the road, you don't know what's going to happen. But, you know, I think we should just re, uh, correct this, um, you know, I know it's not, I, I, we, we have a motion on the floor, it's been second, and I guess we're voting on whether or not we're going to, um, spend money on this, uh, this, this, this issue that should not be an issue, you know, um, and, and somebody have to be the bigger person and step up and say, you know, let's do the right thing here. And the right thing here is to, like I think, my opinion is to do one or two things, either, you know, reset this, uh, from, um, as it should be from the, after the election, meaning in January, to run for two years, or to, um, just make this term two and a half years, which, you know, which then would be an exception. So, you know, I'm done.
Mr. Attorney, I want to make sure I understand that bringing this outside council, there would not be an additional cost to this city.
I'll pay it.
Okay. That's what I would know.
I caused it, I'll pay it, I'm a big boy. At least I don't kill people when I make a mistake.
All right, we have a measure on the floor, and properly, uh, motion to end is second. Um, in discussion, is there further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, can we just repeat the motion so I can hear it again? It was like 45 minutes ago.
Well, let me, let me, let me...
Can we repeat the motion, please?
Is that, is that, you want, is that the, the opinion should be, um, based upon not only whatever the facts are, but it should also be based upon, um, the analysis of the charter and the reasons for the opinion? Is that...
Well, sort of.
Okay.
What, um, the motion was first of all to retain the person that, um, you recommended, which I think is Thomas Mitchell.
That's right.
Law Firm, that we do, um, accept your counsel on that and retain him, and that when he does provide his legal opinion, that he please provide that not verbal, not oral, but in writing, and that he provide a detailed analysis of how he arrived at his legal opinion.
Okay.
And you can rephrase the motion.
No, well, that's what, that's what the legal opinion would do, you know, and, um, he asked me if he would need to come here and interview people and present orally, and I told him not, so I think that's, that's, that's good too. Okay? But I will, uh, if, if this is true, then I will send him that message, that email with that, with those conditions, which won't be an issue to him because that's what he would do anyway.
All right, all right, slow.
No worries.
Okay. Um, so in that case, Secretary, will you have the engagement letter to reflect the engagement it would actually be between the three of us, the city on the tally, and...
No, it'll just be, the engagement will be by the city, I'm just going to pay for it. I'm not a party to this.
I just wanted to make sure, because the engagement letter would assume that we would, I mean, it actually says the city is to pay, the city pays for, the city agrees to pay for.
That's right.
So in writing, by law, we would be accountable for the payment. So the payment is going to change, the payment terms are changing, I want to make sure that the city is still not in...
Well, first of all, I don't want, I don't want, uh, Mr. Mitchell to know that. He might want to charge it. First of all. Two, second of all, is that, um, the city manager... Second of all, is that, um, the city manager and whoever processes our invoices, that if we don't write the check to reverse it, he has ways to, to credit it on what our invoices are. So, um, Ms. Cobble, I think, well, let's just leave it the way it is.
I'm looking at the timeline for this thing to be completed, or?
Yes, it has to be, it'll need to be completed by the January 2nd.
Right, okay, good.
And he knows that. Okay, I got a lot of nods up here, my apologies, but whatever y'all want to do.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, been properly second. Um, any further discussion? Say you're not. All right, all in favor of using Law Firm? All opposed?
Let's see.
Did you vote?
Yes, I did.
Yes, you did.
So that's a 3-3.
Fails. You cover it. You cover it?
You mean, I cover what?
As, as you have to make a, make a, make an opinion on where we go next.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks for putting me in the box.
Sure. All right. Mr. City Attorney.
Just a few quick things as well, make sure the council, mayor and council and citizens are aware of. Earlier or late last week, we actually, we sent, we did our first mailing of business renewals, which is actually a big deal for us, you know, we, we, we kind of relied on what was done at the county level last year. So this was our first, um, business license renewal process. We sent out 3,088 business license renewals, um, we're excited about that. Business license will be due by, uh, by prior to April, um, with alcohol license being due by the end of the year. So it was a big, big step for us. Um, also, we, we started the process of doing, um, budget discussions, we met with one of the council members already, and I'll be contacting the remaining council members this week, first part of this week to schedule those remaining meetings. Um, there is additional information, I'll be providing some of that to all the council members today in regards to the org chart and the, and the actuals to date, or so, and gathering, just allow that information together. Um, and also want to let the council know that we are, we're excited about being in our new space here. Um, of the AV side, we've got the AV, the audio is in place and working well, um, with the speakers and the microphones. The monitors will be being installed over the course of next couple of weeks, so, um, next time, we come in for public media, we'll have monitors, we'll do presentations for, with council and the, those attending, be able to see examples being shown. That's it.
Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Anderson.
Um, I have no, nothing further to report.
All right. Um, very good.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One other thing I do want to add, clerk brought my attention, we did discuss, um, dates for the budget, um, adoption. Um, we've been, you know, we've, we're looking at running in the paper this, December 8th, this Friday, having a public hearing on December 18th, which I think currently is a called, scheduled meeting, and then having a special call meeting that media week after Christmas, but prior to the new year, around the 27th, 28th.
And that was for what, Mr. Attorney?
This is for the final adoption of the budget.
That's all, the budget?
Yes, sir.
I'll give the dates again, December 8th?
December 8th, December 18th. And we'll nail down, we have 27th or 28th, and I'll just poll the council, if you want to nail down right now, we can do that.
So your first budget meeting, hearing is when?
Public hearing is on the 18th.
On the 18th?
Yes.
So your last public hearing was on the last week in December?
That's correct. Um, so it's the 28th, December 28th, that'd be a Thursday.
The 28th is a Thursday.
Yes, sir.
It has to be a special call, the.
Yeah, I'm all right. I'm good on, I'm good on. I'll, I'll yield to the council discretion as far as how you want to have it, you know, we're, we're here.
Um, Mr. Harris, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, when will we get the actual numbers for 2017 so that we have a reference, our starting point, so that we have enough, enough time to really evaluate it before our public meeting?
Sure, I'm, I'm working on that now. We, we ran the trial balances, the trial balance sheets, and the trial general ledgers. Um, all the informations had not been inputted yet into our new, um, software system, they're working on that as I, as we speak. But I can, I've gone through over the weekend and pulled some of the numbers out based on just our banking account numbers, so I'm inputting that information now. I will have the org chart, I commit to having it to you by, by middle of this week, by Wednesday.
Okay, because even if it's a rough draft, you know, even if you have to, because I know you're still trying to get the numbers in, but if you could just give me a rough draft?
Certainly will.
That would help.
Certainly will.
Okay, well, uh, we'll communicate by email with, uh, council persons to make sure they have the, their countables open.
Yes, sir.
Make sure that we, you know, pass the budget in a proper period of time. All right, we'll, uh, start with, um, on council, the council comments, if there's no need to leave, so I'll start with you. Okay, Councilman?
So, District 1, we, we have our, uh, what we call community leaders meeting, we have that in various locations throughout the district every, uh, month, sometimes twice a month, they are well-attended. Uh, this is like an insider meeting, so to speak, so you get to hear, you know, the nitty-gritty. We don't typically advertise these meetings live because we're looking for leaders, so we're looking for people who want to show up. So, we've had quite a few people show up over the years, I mean, over the months, and so we have another one, it's going to be on the 16th of December, it's going to be at 10:00 a.m., which I believe is on a Saturday, and it's going to be at Fairfield Baptist Church, which is in the north part of, like, of District 1. As a matter of fact, most of our meetings are in the northern park, uh, so we're also going to have at some point in time another meeting at, um, at or around the parts of Stonecrest on the south side of the district, uh, in the library, but that would have not been scheduled yet, okay? Thanks.
Mr. Attorney?
Just want to say, um, so happy to get in line. Just want to say, I'm proud to have to be in our new city hall, and, uh.
On Saturday past.
On Saturday past, we had a symposium at the Salem, uh, Nola Library, and was held sponsored by the Citizen for a Healthy and Safe Environment. They talked about climate control, climate, not climate control, but climates changing. And, uh, I understand that a series of these is going to be held, and we will keep you in apprise as to when they're going to be held next. Just want to make you know that it was a, let you know that that was a very well-attended symposium, quite informative, and, uh, we encourage you to participate. Thank you.
A small.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of my constituents in District 5 for being civically engaged. Those of you who came out, you spoke elegantly, and I want to thank you so much for your opinion. Um, tomorrow, I will be hosting a request for proposal, small business workshop, and the purpose of this is if you intend to bid on any city in general, any city contract, um, one of the things we're going to talk about is what the scope of work is and what you need to review to be competitive on that, and we're going to talk about the difference between commercial and government RFPs, and the difference between non-responsive and non-compliant, and it's free and anybody can attend. I did get a call from the Department of Community Affairs, and, and they mentioned that they have 28 million in funding for small businesses, and one of the things that we're trying to do is partner with them and let them come out and talk to small businesses about, um, the opportunity to be able to qualify for some of that funding. Second, um, on Christmas Day, if any of you are in town and you just want to do something great for the city of Stonecrest, we will be feeding, I will be feeding along with any volunteer, uh, in any parts of Stonecrest, we'll be feeding our men in blue, the police officers at the East Precinct, who they don't get that opportunity to spend Christmas with their family because they're working protecting you and me. And so, um, they have accepted the invitation to let any of us, any of you can jump on board, help me feed 52 officers on Christmas Day. Um, the congressmen have stepped up and said he wants to be part of this, and I believe, um, Councilwoman Cobble says she wants to be part, but anybody who's in town can participate and help us show our appreciation for the men in blue. And thank you again, District 5, for your voices, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Um, we have a couple of three things. One is that, uh, we're still in the midst of taking, uh, opinions with regards to changing the meeting times, and, uh, we're trying to, uh, get to a point where we get that settled. Um, but I do want to take a, um, impromptu short survey here with the folks that are in the audience. Uh, if you had a choice between two entities, police or parks, hold on there for a second, you had a choice to provide service between those two entities, if you had to choose, police service or parks, if all things were equal with regards to cost, let me see the hands that would go up for police. All right, let me see the hands for parks. My question is answered. Thank you. Um, and we'll, um, we'll, we're trying to come to a meaningful time, uh, with regards to, uh, our changing meeting times for 2018. Um, we've gotten a lot of input from a lot of different people, uh, with regards to where we need to go on that. Uh, I'd like to thank, um, all of City of Stonecrest constituents, because I have received a great many support emails with regards to where we were going, uh, with the charter, and I, I've received some that was not any support, that's okay, it comes with it, that's, that's why democracy. Uh, but I, uh, most of all, what I like the most is, um, for the people to have the opportunity for their sake. Um, I also wanted to clear something up too, that I think that, uh, I've heard a couple of times now that has a misunderstanding about where we're going and what we're doing. Uh, first of all, I want to give public praise, uh, for our prime partner, and that's CH2M, period. So, I want everybody to give them a round of applause, if you will. If it weren't for CH2M, there would be no employees. See, we wouldn't have a city without CH2M, and they are doing their work and they're, they are doing a fine job of it, and they make a great, you know, great partner for us. Uh, we look at the number and people throw out at times, oh, you know, it's 16 million, it's a, it, it costs what it costs to run a city. And it's, they're within our budgetary guidelines, and they're doing great for which, with regards to, um, to what they're doing, and that's over five years and carrying a payroll of 25 people. So, uh, they're doing, they're doing fantastic. Um, as provisions with regards to the original charter, uh, we get a tremendous amount of questions on this because one of the things that people, uh, a lot of, a lot of citizens say, and that we've heard you loudly, is that, uh, you signed up for this and you ran. Well, that is correct. We signed up for this and we ran based on a lot of factors, and one of the primary factors was being able to be an independent corporate city that delivered high-quality, world-class service. And to be able to do that, you can't use the same charter that you came in with it to be able to move forward. It's, it's just not possible. Let me give you a very specific example. When we ran for office, there was no splosh. We'd be working with an eight, nine million dollar budget on certain amount of, of services that we were going to deliver. Now, we're working on a 16, 17 million dollar budget, and that's not including grants that we're applying for. And by law, folks, read my lips on this carefully and nicely, I mean, it's in a nice way, by law, we have to take over public works, roads and drains, that is a heavy lift. So that means simply, you can't use the same amount of people to do the same amount of work that comes along with double what's happening in this arena. Does that, does that sort of make economic sense there? Can't use the same amount of people to do the same, uh, you know, twice, you know, twice the work. So, um, um, having said that, uh, one of the, uh, and I'll give you a very specific example of, of, of the charter change as you look at it. You all see us take a vote up here? It was 3-3, correct? 3-3, it fails. One of the charter changes is so that the mayor would not vote. So if you have no charter changes, you don't support the charter changes at all, it still stands the way it is. Now, if this were a charter change already, this would have been a 3-2 vote, and you would have had a decision either way where you were going. But as it sits today in the charter, the mayor votes. So there's a couple of three things that way. The, the voting of the mayor, uh, veto power, a couple of three things that you have to read close with regards to where we're going and why we are trying to separate the executive branch to the legislative branch. It's not right or wrong either way, it's a separation with regards to what focus, um, that you have. Last but not least, um, I meant every word we said with regards to us becoming, um, a world-class city, and we can get there, and that's remarketing energy, and bringing in major corporations, and quite frankly, folks, whether I get brought over by a truck tomorrow or have a, aneurysm, or, thank, thank goodness for none of that, the next person that steps in this chair has to have the same abilities or better to run a corporate city, and that person cannot take their smock off at Home Depot and run over to a meeting to meet the president of Georgia Power or a major corporation. That's not how this works. And the reason I make this appeal to you has very little to do with regards to where compensation is going, it has mostly to do with how we are going to act as a city for now and for the future. We're executive-built, we're different than, than Charge Creek, we're different than Pro Haven. I've said it these cities, when they started and where they're going to from here, they already had a billion dollars in business when they started. We did not. We're growing business as we are today, and be proud of that, with regards to it. Thank you for listening to me, I'll take on adjournment before our meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Just a second? All right, we are now adjourned.